Good evening, this is to call to order the Committee of the Whole for November 15th, 2012. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Clerk's here. Mayor Pro Tim Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klebanow is absent tonight. Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek, I'm sure, is on his way.
He's behind that freight out there.
Oh, good. Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malick.
Okay, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. There he is. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our village attorney is... Elvis has entered the building.
Sorry, Emily.
That's okay. Open forum requests. For open forums this evening, participants are advised that the open forum procedure is a privilege and should not be abused. Persons will be recognized, given the chance to speak, and then the question or request will be answered, if necessary, referred to village staff for a response. Rules of order and common courtesy will be rendered and expected. Time limit for each person is three minutes unless previous arrangements with the mayor have been agreed upon. Items that will take more than three minutes should be placed on the next Committee of the Whole meeting agenda. Contact Mr. Searle, our village manager, for placement on the agenda. This evening, our first open forum request is Bob Mueller.
Good evening. On November 6, 2012...
Excuse me, please state your name and address.
Bob Mueller, 44 West 59th Street, Apartment D, Westmont, Illinois. On November 6, 2012, the U.S. Census Bureau had the population of Westmont just below 25,000. Since the population had fallen below 25,000, as reported in a special census of 2007, the referendum on home rule was required to be on the ballot. Despite a deceitfully worded question, Westmont voters rejected home rule. Now some on the board claim they can ignore the voice of the voters because there is an appeal of the 2010 census pending. We who oppose home rule welcome the board's admission in the progress that home rule is all about taxing power. However, claiming they can ignore the voters' will should be anathema to anyone who respects both constitutions and voting rights. We are currently in a period of legal limbo until the vote is certified. The village can issue inspection notices, but the landlords can refuse access based on lack of home rule authority. Once the vote is certified, the board can no longer issue inspection notices and landlord licenses for 2013 cannot be required. This is a simple action. The problem areas are the taxes the board created under home rule. These must be stopped shortly after certification, if not before. Although almost 30 years old, I recommend the board review Lyle, Lombard, Philip Park, and Rockford history to see how they acted when they lost home rule power. The voters have spoken. Thank you.
Next open forum request is from Kim Palladino of Palladino Photography.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Kim Palladino, 38 North Cass, right here in Westmont. And I'm here with Laura this evening to publicly announce the winners of a costume contest that was held at La La Lee Bakery and Palladino Photography. I have our first, second, and third place winners to be announced. I requested that they be here this evening. I only see one here. Our first-place winner, with 2,000 votes for best contest and a costume and a $75 gift card, was Vanessa Meyer's children. They were dressed as Barney and an Incredible.
Can you put them... Will the overhead pick up the picture?
I will need a...
Oops. Cute.
That is a dry erase board that we had designed for the winner, and each one of our place people will also get a dry erase board.
Cute.
Our second-place winner was the Greco family. Dennis was supposed to be here this evening, and they were the Incredible family.
You know, I was handing out the cookies at La La Lee, and I didn't even know that was Denny Greco.
That was him. And our third-place winner is here this evening.
Jack.
And I'm coming up to get my award now.
And he was our Thomas the Train.
All right.
Yay!
And so this is... Let me hand this back to you. More importantly than the prizes, the purpose of doing the contest was to get votes. All the vote money that was turned in and counted will be then passed on to the Chamber of Commerce Foundation Education Fund. And for the two hours that we were there and did pictures, and then people came in afterwards and voted, a penny a vote, we are very pleased to announce that we raised $90.95. An anonymous voter donated $9.15. So Palladino Photography and La La Lee Bakery will be donating $100 to the Chamber of Commerce Education Foundation Fund. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. It was a fun event. Congratulations, Jackson.
Say thank you. Say thank you.
Thanks, Dad.
He's so cute.
Our next open forum request is from Grace Snyder Kubica.
Good evening. My name is Grace Snyder Kubica, and I'm speaking to you first as president of the landlord association, the Westmont Landlord Association. Since the election has occurred and the vote went to rescind home rule, I've spoken with my steering committee, and we feel that it is within our realm to request that you immediately suspend the inspection and licensing for the multifamily ordinance since it no longer applies without home rule. Now, as a citizen, took off the president's hat, I'm a voting citizen in this community. There's a lot of nonsense in the paper about the Census Bureau can override the vote. I think that was one of those inflammatory statements they like to catch your eye with. But I want to believe that our vote counts, and citizens of this community have voted to return this village to a constitutionally governed community. And so I hope it shall be without any reservations, without any hard feelings. However, I would really like to know for sure that the vote counts and that any census appeal has nothing to do with the vote, even though the newspaper was apparently indicating that it might. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last open forum... Nope, it's not our last one. Laura Fleming.
Hi, Laura Fleming, 340 South Washington and La La Lee Patisserie. I just wanted to talk about Holidays coming up next week. We have the downtown community small business on Saturday, the 24th, and hope that people will come and shop in downtown Westmont. And also to talk about Santa's reindeer and roasted chestnuts and the high school choir on the 23rd, starting at 5:30. And at 6:45, Frosty and Friends Parade will kick off at 6:45, and I hear Frosty this year has two elves. Then followed by the village tree lighting with Santa and the Westmont Plaza. And then afterwards, after the tree lighting at 7:15, then Santa and Mrs. Claus will greet all the kids in the lower level of Westmont Center. Then Saturday, the Rotary will be holding the Holidays 5K Family Fun Run Walk at 8:00 AM on Saturday, and it's a 5K. Some of us can do it, some of us can't, meaning because can't do it anymore. And then Westmont Renaissance will be wrapping free at Frame Makers, any purchases bought in downtown or bought in Westmont. So I just wanted to let everybody know that next weekend, starting Friday, is going to be a very busy weekend, and hope to see everybody in downtown.
Thank you. And our last open forum request from Audrey Payne.
Mine's a simple request. I just would like to know what the village ordinance is about distributing marketing materials at my home and on my car. I'm up to here. And there must be something that... They must be licensed. They must have permission to put that junk all over my car and all over my property.
Property's different than your car.
Okay, I care more about my property.
John will explain what our ordinances do and what they can't do.
We do have a solicitation ordinance that requires a permit for people going door-to-door to solicit funds, donations, et cetera. And I believe you can put a no solicitor sign on your home, which, as part of the permit, they would have to honor that. Unfortunately, the marketing papers like gutter cleaning and air duct cleaning and variety of things isn't technically a solicitation of funds. So I apologize, but I'll have to look in our ordinance to see how we address that if at all.
It's just, if I remember correctly, as far as putting anything on the cars in the parking lots, that is a no-no. And if they see you do it, you can get ticketed for it because that's not allowed. As far as what they do at home, at your home, we can't stop them from giving you advertising materials. We can stop them from soliciting both donations and sales, but I don't think we've got anything to stop direct marketing.
You know, I just looked into this for a Westmont business about six or seven months ago. They wanted to know if they could put something on windshields in cars. And the answer that we came up with or that we found was that if it's private property... She was specifically thinking like the industrial area. If the building owner gives them approval, they can do it. So if it's private property, they just need...
Yeah, because like the public lots, the train lots, the public parking lots specifically cannot do it. They do it and just do it fast and hope they don't get caught. But if it's going on stuffing...
Well, I hope the public works guys that had to clean up all those Canyon Burger flyers last week are aware of who was doing it last week.
I think they took the ones with all the coupons. Because it was buy one, get one free. And we saw a lot of public works guys there the next day.
So even if they attach it to your house, they stick it to the window on your front door? You have no... I have no recourse. I just get to clean it up.
It leaves my door and goes right to my recycling bin, two or three a day.
That's if it's still there. If you have to go climbing through the bushes...
I get them every other day also at my house.
Yeah, I'm sure you all do.
Especially with the wind recently.
And the newspapers at the foot of the driveway that clog up my snow thrower and make me put it in the shop?
Now that they toss them there and don't put them in your mailbox, there used to be a number on it that said to stop it. It was up on the top right corner of that Trib Local Marketing...
And I've done that, and it stops for about three months, and then it starts up again. So, okay, thank you.
Sorry, we don't have better news for you. Mayor's report... The mayor hasn't left me anything for tonight, has he? Okay. It's a request for executive session on personnel and on threatened litigation. And tomorrow night is the Westmont Winter Ball. It should be a good turnout. There's been a lot of seats sold. And for those of you who are going and have heard in the past about our... The Volunteer K-9 Unit, you will be able to see, and I'm not going to tell you how you're going to see them, the Volunteer K-9 Unit tomorrow with the ball, which is Finn and Sylvia Emery, related to me in some way. So I just wanted to tell you. It's going to be a surprise. I don't have anything else. Clerk's report.
I just want to remind everybody that the Lions Club will be hosting a Pancake Breakfast on Sunday morning. That's the day that the arts and crafts are at the Park District. Pancake Breakfast will be in the Administration Office Building. They'll be decorating the trees, just to vary it up and down around there. I have promised that I will work the whole day, so...
Well, and in addition, we had budgeted for this year all new Christmas decorations, not the fresh kind because they're very expensive and we can't reuse them, but the reusable kinds. So come down to Holidays and see our new Christmas decorations.
And the other thing I want to remind everybody that the final precinct results will not be available until November 26th. The county canvases them, and when they are finished with their canvass, we will get them. And the latest email I got from them, they will not be available until November 26th.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I can't think of another thing. Thanks.
Okay. Village attorney, Mr. Zemanek.
Thanks, I've got nothing tonight.
Village manager.
I just wanted to mention a couple informational pieces. The finance ordinance tonight is $1,551,103.81. A vast majority of that is our water main project, as well as our monthly payment to the DuPage Water Commission, about half of that. So I wanted to let you know that. And also wanted, and I believe this is true, there will be a public information committee meeting...
I was just going to say that.
Okay, on Monday.
Starting at 6:00.
Is it at 6:00? Okay. So that meeting will take place here in the village.
Thanks.
And that's all I have.
Okey-dokey. Trustees. Trustee Nero.
The only thing I have is I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week. Enjoy your time off, I know I'm going to, and eat lots, and have a good time with your family and friends. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Trustee Fleming.
I have nothing this evening, but I will in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just also, a happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Eat lots of turkey. And I wanted to take a moment to congratulate the Westmont Rotary. Some of us attended this last Sunday their annual cabaret. It's a fundraiser. And the Rotary right here in Westmont does so much good work with foreign exchange students and scholarships and everything from helping with earthquakes overseas to disasters here. It's a small group, but it's a mighty group, and it was just a really, really nice evening. So I wanted to congratulate them and say thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Scott.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate the Westmont High School Fine Arts Department for the fall play. It was The Odd Couple, very funny play. It was hilarious, and a good time was had by all. And I also would like to thank the 8,000-plus voters that came out at the election. This was a nice showing, and we appreciate it very much, we do. But that still left almost 4,500 people in this community that didn't vote.
That are registered voters.
That are registered voters that didn't, and that's the shame of it. So congratulate the some, and the other ones, I wish you'd come out and vote. Other than that, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I have one more thing to add. Thanks to John Zibless, who brought me hot tea and honey for my throat so I can see what a nice person he is. And most people never see him, but he is a great guy. Okey-dokey. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda? The consent agenda consists of the village board meeting minutes, the finance ordinance number 14, purchase orders. Do we have a total of the purchase orders? You gave the total of the finance ordinance. Do you have a total of the purchase orders?
I do not, but if you come back in any few minutes, I will.
Okay.
Sorry.
I dropped that calculator phone. Okay. Unfinished business. 389 North Cass, ComEd Fence Height Variation Request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a zoning code variance request from ComEd to allow an increased fence height in an R4 residential district at the Cass Avenue substation. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
Please introduce yourself so the folks...
John O'Halloran, ComEd External Affairs Manager.
Uh...
Still standing? He's got hair? This guy's good, huh?
Yes. He's kind of like Mr. Timex. Well, I think to sum it up, what was up tonight was a request for forestry and vegetation in front of a proposed fence that would go around the pole farm closer to Cass Avenue. Shannon's putting that up on there. Shannon, would you point out where the existing fence is, please?
So the existing fence is pretty much flush with the station building, and the proposed fence would come out beyond to approximately where the border of this landscaping screening is.
And how many feet does that new proposed fence come out towards Cass from the existing fence?
Do you have that dimension?
Let me look in my...
And conversely, how close to Cass is that fence going to be?
It's 37 feet west of the existing fence.
Mm-hmm. Far east of the sidewalk or the curb line, either one.
This is 20.
That's the 37, and I couldn't guarantee that that was the scale. I know that the measurements were made to provide sightlines off that corner at Melrose.
Okay. For the people watching at home, this item was discussed at last Monday's Public Works Committee meeting, and the consensus seemed to be that the pole farm, which was put in that tract of land in the 37 feet between the existing fence and the proposed new fence line, is unsightly and undesirable and detrimental to the big parcel of property across Cass, which the owner is trying to sell and develop. And we have asked ComEd to go back and come up with another solution other than the bottom one, which is to put shrimpy shrubs in, comparatively speaking. I mean, they'd be a good size, but compared to the poles that are out there, they'd be shrimpy. We are very unhappy with being told that this is going to be state-of-the-art equipment and went in our good old-fashioned telephone poles and tons of wires and tons of outdoor equipment. So we've asked ComEd to come up with an alternative plan, including putting as much of this equipment inside the old substation and certainly within the boundaries of the old fence. We had to have it on the agenda because it was already on the agenda and too late to take it off the agenda, but that's kind of where we are. So at this point, do we postpone it indefinitely, or what do we do? But we want the people that live around there that are, you know, saying to themselves in their TV screens right now, what's going on with that? We are not prepared to vote on this because it would not be a successful vote to do this. So like I say, we've asked ComEd to take it, to go back to the drawing board.
Yeah, there's a couple options. Certainly, if ComEd insisted on a vote saying, here's our plan, it's fencing, it's landscaping, you may choose to reject it, but that's what we're proposing, we want to vote, you have the right to vote it up or down on Monday. If the majority of the trustees wants to postpone this, you certainly can do that and have further discussions with ComEd about an acceptable solution. Because that wasn't at the committee member, I'm not sure, or at the committee meeting, I'm not sure the exact...
It seems that's what we want to do. We sort of...
Catch up for progress, yeah.
Put it back in comments, the ball back in their court, and said, come up with a better solution.
John, did anything change between... You mentioned in passing to me...
Terry Simmons from our company and I have reported back to our leadership the comments that were made Monday night, tonight, and previously. We're going to work with our engineering capacity planning departments that engineer and design this type of work and look at possible alternatives for some resolution, meet with staff, and then eventually get back to the board with proposals. So that's our tack, is to talk internally with the groups that manage and operate and engineer these facilities.
Okay. So we'll postpone on Monday? Yeah. Yeah.
Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming again.
Appreciate you working with us, too.
Thank you.
Well, that's what we're here for. Enjoy the evening.
Should we just pull it, John, or do we have to make a motion?
You know, because it's a variance that's come back, I would rather have a motion to postpone, so it kind of is tracked better.
Motion on Monday?
Yes.
Postpone? Okay. Motion...
Do you want the purchase order?
Yes, please. What's the total of the purchase orders on the consent agenda?
The total is $1,079,286.94. Most of that is also a portion that's on the finance ordinance, it's simultaneously on the finance ordinance involving the water main project on North Grant, North Adams. That's like 774,000. In addition to that, we've got our order placement for salt, getting ready for the winter. And then we've got some roofing work that was budgeted at the fire department. Those are kind of the three largest numbers out of that whole list.
Okey-dokey. And all of it was budgeted or previously discussed, and of course, the individual purchase orders are available on the village's website.
Yes, they are.
New business, Class III liquor license, Jimmy's Island Grill. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the number of available Class III liquor licenses by one to accommodate a liquor license request from Jimmy's Island Grill, Westmont LLC, doing business as Jimmy's Island Grill Restaurant, located at 800 East Ogden Avenue. Welcome.
Welcome. I'm James Chin, Jimmy. I wanted to thank everybody for giving me this time and consideration for our new business proposal.
Couple of things, just so people can relate to it, that you're going in the space that used to be Guavin before that.
Cucina Roma.
Everyone knows. It was a test. And are you related to the famous Chin family of various seafood restaurants in the Chicagoland area?
I am.
Yahoo!
I've got a long experience with the restaurant business.
Good. So this isn't your first rodeo?
No.
Are you related to Bob?
He's my uncle.
He is, awesome.
Yeah. My brother has a restaurant on Ogden Avenue as well, about 10 miles...
34th Street?
Yes, correct. Lyle.
One Whaling, I think, is better, but that's just my personal preference.
Yeah, I agree. I like Whaling. I like Whaling.
I was just there yesterday for lunch. I've been eating those garlic rolls since I've been about six years old. So it's a fantastic restaurant.
Well, thank you.
So excited about this. I couldn't wait to see you, meet you, so...
I've been...
Really looking forward to your restaurant.
I spent 10 years at the restaurant in Whaling. My brother actually spent nine years as a manager over there as well, so...
Can you do the garlic rolls the same here as One Whaling?
Um...
I'll let you do that, or...
Yeah.
How do we know how to get any of your talk? All right.
Never stops talking. Garlic rolls!
Garlic rolls, and I'll start going.
Garlic rolls in my taste.
Very good.
Oh, good. Oh, good.
Most of our fish is actually flown indirect from Hawaii. The same people that we've been doing business with for 25 or 30 years. And they basically, we call them today, they have an auction guy go out and auction our fish and ship it out actually the same day, so.
It's fantastic.
It's pretty fresh. We're going to have prime beef, obviously a good selection of wine and liquors. I think that this area is conducive for, you know, the specific concept that we're proposing. So I think it's a great location for us.
We think so, too.
Thank you.
Pull my cover.
Exactly.
We're going to have to keep away from the bar. Is that what it is? The garlic rolls?
Garlic rolls, more importantly.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about the liquor license aspect?
I actually do. It's a Class III, but it also says that our information says that it's just going to be a service bar, but your floor plan shows a full bar.
It is a full bar.
It is a full bar.
So it's a full bar and a service bar?
Well, the service bar only will be to serve the tables, but then there is a standalone bar area.
Okay, the way our...
Way out is Guava Headed. It's the square bar.
It's a full bar.
Great, I just wanted to confirm that.
That was on me.
Okay, the background information makes it sound like there's not going to be a bar. So it's like, great.
I figured that's why they wanted the liquor license. Can't fool us.
Yeah, enough of that service bar business.
Anything else? We look forward greatly to your opening.
Thank you very much.
And we'll vote on Monday.
We're more excited than you yet.
Jim, do you have anything to add?
All right, that was your change.
Which Jim?
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Thank you.
Vote on Monday.
I would like to just say thank you. It's been a great road dealing with the people in the Community Development Department.
Thank you.
They've done a great job. They've helped us throughout the entire process, and I just wanted to say thanks to them.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving and thank you for your consideration.
Thanks. Do you have a target opening date?
I wish it was tomorrow, but we're going to assume it's going to be closer to mid to late December.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I was just there two days ago, and I'm like, this isn't close.
Did you see me with a hammer?
Not close enough.
I had a broom.
Great, thanks so much.
Well, thank you. Have a great evening. Thanks.
Our next item. 3500 Midwest Road, Marriott telecommunications equipment, fire department variance request. Board to consider an ordinance granting a zoning code variance request from the Village of Westmont Fire Department to permit more than three antennas on a structure.
Good evening.
Hello, Chief Weiss.
Fire Chief Weiss from the Westmont Fire Department here in front of you tonight to ask for variance, verency, and the codes. I'd like to start out with, is this reading something to you? Kind of sum up what we're requesting here. The Fire Department's been working with several of our neighboring departments to update and align a conventional public safety radio system in the southern portion of DuPage County. Last month, the Village Board signed a memorandum of understanding with the Village of Clarton Hills and Tri-State Fire Protection District to fund the construction of these radio systems associated with microwave communications. The DuPage County Emergency Telephone System Board, ETSB, has passed resolutions to reimburse the parties to the MOU for the cost of these systems. Public safety radio equipment is currently at dislocation. Some will be replaced to accommodate the Westmont Police Department, Westmont Fire Department, and neighboring police and fire agencies. The only noticeable change should be the addition of two three-foot diameter microwave dishes and one vertical antenna. This is a critical project for public safety, including primary fire paging capabilities, backup fire, and police communications. We appreciate your vote to approve this variance, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Even I, the anti-antenna person, know that when it's for police and fire communications... Okay.
Do you notice that we include the police department?
I just received a unanimous recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission last night. There were some visuals shown showing that there would be no impact above and beyond really what exists there today. There was one member from the public who spoke, who seemed satisfied after seeing the visual depiction of what this will look like and hearing a description of the item.
Good. Sir, we'll vote on your request on Monday.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
I have to stay here one more.
Yes, you do. We have another request. 205 West 63rd Street, water tower telecommunications equipment, fire department variance. Board to consider an ordinance granting a zoning code variance request from the Village of Westmont Fire Department to permit more than three antennas on a water. I forgot the tower. Is there something else other than after tower? My copy just says on a water.
Just tower.
Water tower.
It's all up here. Just tower.
Okay.
That'd be the water tower at 63rd and Cass.
Yep. How many antennas are on there?
Boy, I don't know, Shannon.
Just out of curiosity, because I kind of think it's funny that we're always varying the more than three antennas when there's like 300.
Well, at this location, relatively speaking, there aren't as many as several of the other sites we've looked at. It's about nine total. With the new installation of the two microwave dishes and three antenna, it'll bring it up to about 14 pieces of equipment.
Okay. Good.
And Shannon, just so I'm clear, we don't have the structural reports back from a structural engineer certifying that the structures can handle this. So the ordinance will say that permits to install the equipment will be contingent upon a satisfactory structural report.
Right.
Just to add a little comment to that structural report, all the equipment that we're going to put in both locations doesn't weigh any more than 232 pounds. So just want to add that.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll vote on your request on Monday. Next item, Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. Board to consider a motion supporting the Village's participation in the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus for the purpose of addressing municipal concerns related to the Illinois Commerce Commission municipal electric aggregation rulemaking.
We're looking, even though this is a large budget amount, we needed the board's permission. This is something that we have not budgeted for, but we feel it's worthwhile, particularly given the success that we had in our recent partnership with Downers Grove in saving a significant amount of electrical supply costs for residents. There is an effort out there to petition the Illinois Commerce Commission to possibly change how that process works, and we want to protect that process. And the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus has reached out and has asked participating councils of governments and other municipalities to participate in that effort to make sure that we continue to preserve what we think's been a pretty successful process for our residents.
Because the ICC wants to make some changes now that everybody's had voted on aggregation and stuff. Now they want to start playing with it.
I think there are some other entities, too, that are asking them to look at changes, too.
Thanks again to John Zibless. Boy, my throat's better. I could keep talking. Anything else?
You sound much better.
Can you sing a Thanks, Sammy?
Let's start over.
Why don't you sing a little Thanksgiving song for everyone?
I know that would not be a good idea. Anything else to come before the board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So move, Scott.
Second, Seneca.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Trustee Fleming.
Yes.
Trustee Seneca.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Emery.
Yes.